Roll call for the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, April 3rd, 2013 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, and Mr. Witherspoon. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
This morning, we asked that we remember all of those in our community, locally and globally, that are less fortunate than we are. Remember our youth in this community, again, and throughout the world. We will be as leaders to make their world as best as we can make it. Also, we ask our God and Creator to give us wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of Erie. And finally, remember the Hamilton family. It was a student at Woodrow Wilson a couple of years ago, and one of our favorite, most influential teachers there, Mr. Bill Hamilton, passed away and had his home-going service yesterday. So, let's remember that family and all those that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers.
The Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of March 20th and approval of bills for March 28th and April 5th. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.
Any requests for a repository sale today? Yes, sir.
I'm requesting property located on 648 West Fourth Street.
Please, if you would, state your name, and was anything submitted to clerkship?
My name is Michael Clement.
Michael what?
Michael Clement. I submitted the repository bid, I believe, a month ago with the $250 deposit.
Do we get anything for this, Mr. President?
I did not. Michael Clement, did we receive anything for a repository sale?
No, we didn't. We have Clemens, but not Clement. But he can tell us about it. I'll call upstairs and see if they forgot to send a file back.
Yeah, please issue your intentions, and if we have any questions, Floria, we'll follow through with those.
I'd like to fix the house up and live in it for a while, and then when I move up, get another house, I'd like to rent it out.
So, you want to fix it up to rent it? Is that what you're saying?
Eventually, but I'd live in it first, because I need someplace to go other than my parents' house.
I hear you. That's worth $250.
I'm not one for getting a mortgage right now. I don't like the idea of borrowing money when I think that there's something to gain from this property. I don't like buying new things when there's something perfectly capable of being recycled.
Mr. Clement, can you tell us the condition of the property now, and what repairs and things like that you are going to do to make it more, remove the problems in the neighborhood for us?
It needs new siding and a new roof. I have a couple of friends that went to school for carpentry, and I was going to hire them to put new siding and new roof on. It needs probably plumbing and electrical, I'm assuming. It's been vacant for a while. I have a cousin who is an electrician. I was going to see if he'd be up for the job. If not, I'd hire a licensed contractor for those things.
Is this a duplex or a single-family home?
Single-family home.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
What is the address, again?
648 West Fourth Street.
Any other questions, Council?
You do need to provide your license, I think, if you haven't already done that.
Yeah.
You did that already?
Yeah, he was here, you were here early, correct?
Yes.
And he gave that stuff to Mr. Clement earlier.
Good job.
You got everything done. It looks like we may have not got our work done, but thanks for coming in today, I believe.
Thank you.
You do not have to come in front of Council again. Most likely, it'll be approved at the next meeting, and we'll expedite it for you to get the job going for you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody, any more requests for a repository sale? Any more requests? Hearing none brings us to our Citizens to Be Heard segment. Any citizens to be heard this morning?
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Good morning, citizens.
I know y'all are getting tired of looking at me, but I couldn't care less. You know...
Mr. McDonald, could you please state your name for the record?
Y'all know me.
We know that, but...
You're tired of looking at. McDonald, my profits 19th and Reed. Is that okay?
That's great, thank you.
You know, I'm really disappointed in our young people. You're bringing all them foreigners in, giving them jobs. Of course, some of them haven't learned how to drop them pants down below the cheek yet, but they're headed that way. I see them walking the street drinking beer and smoking, but still, you're giving them our money. You took money, you took my money from my kids, and I'm trying to send them to school because I don't want them to come up like I did. I want them to do better than me, much better, many times better. Not only my kids, other kids too. But you took them off of my Social Security, which you ain't put a penny with it. I'm speaking of the government, not y'all. And you're giving it to them foreigners. I don't blame them foreigners. I'd get all I could to, it's all free. You built them up there on Parade Street, 19th Street, you built them for them. We got soldiers coming back, you're kicking them in the backside, you're not doing nothing for them. They're homeless out there. But you know what? I'm so glad there's a God up there. I could almost shout down here because I know that He will deal with you and peoples like you one day. Yes, He will. You look at me like I'm a damn fool, but I ain't no damn fool. I'm trying to tell you something. Get it right. Get it right while you're breathing, because when you leave here, I ain't hearing nobody coming back. Some of you need to be gone for what you're doing, but it's going to come back on you, I promise you it will. The Bible said it will. I believe in the Bible. I was raised up with that Bible. My mother was a Bible-believing woman. I don't think she did too bad though by herself, but you better, you better look farther than your nose, because you've got some problems coming, serious problems. You got them, just can't see them yet. And you all don't, what we say, and you try not to listen, but I know it crosses your mind. I know it crosses your mind. You take that bridge out there, they're drawing it out, drawing it out. Peoples won't forget it. Peoples won't forget it. Your politicians down in Harrisburg, and your politicians in Washington, they get a pay raise, automatic. We on Social Security, we done worked. Those people, they ain't worked. They just sitting up there drawing a pay, making decisions, seriously, serious decision about people's lives. You're worried more about faggots than you are our babies. Oh, every time I turn the TV on, same-sex marriage, same-sex, I don't give a damn about same-sex marriage. They gonna deal with God about that. If you read your Bible, the Bible says, "If man lay with man and woman lay with woman, the penalty should be death." That's an abomination against God. You look at me like I'm a damn fool, but you're not looking at a fool. You're not looking at, I'm not a big Bible scholar, but I believe in God, and some of y'all don't believe in Him. And you call yourselves men of God, women of God. It's a shame. What come around goes around. You gonna get it? Them big politicians down there, they gonna get it. I'm Mr. So-and-so. Mr. So-and-so got to die for himself, just like everybody else. Every day, you look at the newspaper, somebody done left you. Your turn's coming. Mine coming too. I don't have that much, I'm, look, I thank God, He let me make it this far. I don't know why He did it, but He did it. You didn't do it. You didn't do it. But I tell you what, you better do something for them kids. You don't, them sinners, that's all they got, and you don't want to do nothing for them. And them sinners haven't been, had nothing to do, no kind of remodeling or nothing, at least 20 years, just more than that, but, and that's a shame. You took their money and sent it to Martin over there, somebody over there stealing. Hey, 20 million wrongs don't make one right. Oh, we did this here. If it wasn't right, it was wrong. And what I see you been doing, you're not doing nothing for them kids. And when they break a loose, and I guarantee you, they gonna break a loose one day, they gonna get tired of y'all screwing them like you're doing. And you know what you know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Any other citizens to be heard this morning?
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
My name is David Hunter. I'm from Epic Web Studios over on Ninth and French here in Erie. I picked up my copy of the Erie Reader this morning and turned to the very first article, which is always there, "From the Editor's Piece." This issue is a bit different from usual because it's an open letter to you, our city council. I'd like to share it with you now because I feel the timing is good. In this issue of the Erie Reader, 40 individuals under the age of 40, myself included, are profiled. These men and women of diverse racial, religious, and political backgrounds are the future of our community. They represent the birth of a new progressive model of leadership that rejects the old business-as-usual model and embraces this, the dawning of a new era in Erie. Unfortunately, this era of business-as-usual is not yet over. In fact, not too terribly far from where you now sit, at this very moment, that era is alive and thriving. The lakefront parcel formerly home to the GAF single plant sits empty today, simultaneously a symbol of what once was and what will soon be. That lakefront parcel is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to reshape this community for better or for worse. That lakefront parcel is both a literal and metaphorical gateway to the vast potential lying before Erie and this region. That lakefront parcel is the geographical embodiment of our bright future, just as the 40-under-40 profiled in this issue are the physical embodiment of that future. However, based on the shortcomings and narrow visions of yesteryear, we have reason to fear that the proposed development of this important lakefront parcel threatens to lock out the people of Erie and their bright future forever. And with the absence of a much-needed urban planning department in the city of Erie, we continue to stand before this locked door. What lies on the other side is our future, the identity, and the lasting impression that will solidify that bright future. Wallace Robertson Todd, the lead consultant for Destination Erie, is recognized as one of the best regional planning firms in the world, yet their recommendations may go ignored by a small group of developers, ensconced in their smoky back rooms and intent on foisting their antiquated visions upon the future leaders of this community. This, paired with an overall lack of collaboration, is the epitome of business-as-usual. They are about to lock us out, all of us. Perhaps the only thing that stands in their way is an intrepid group of elected officials who have power to stop them from locking us out by demanding intelligent, mixed-use development and the incorporation of a pedestrian bridge down to the bayfront. So, to the Erie City Council, we say, "Don't give up the GAF. Don't let it become another Niagara Pier. Don't let them lock us out. You have the key." Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard this morning? Hearing none, Ms. Robey?
We now move to old business. We have a resolution sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Mersky, that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise notice of a public hearing to be held on Wednesday, May 1st, 2013, at 9:30 a.m. in City Council Chambers, 626 State Street, Erie, to consider an amendment to the city of Erie zoning code requesting the rezoning of property located at McClellan Avenue and the Bayfront Highway, being approximately 38 acres in area from C3 Central Business District to that of C2 General Business District, per the request of Vendetti Brothers Associates. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Next, then, we move to new business. Resolution sponsored by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, that the proper city officials be and are hereby authorized and directed to execute an easement agreement between the city of Erie and Nemo's Corp., 2604 Vendelia Avenue, Erie, being the owner of 15 West Fourth Street, index 17, 4,002-206, in compliance with the attached City Engineers Meets and Bounds District, locating a proposed sign. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second that motion, or that motion.
Ms. Robey?
We wanted to get, Mr. President, we wanted to give Ms. Robey a little bit of opportunity to read, that's why we waited, give her a little practice.
Are there any separations to the contracts or the purchase orders? Hearing none, Ms. Robey?
Okay, voting on the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.
Brings us to committee reports. We'll go with Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended a couple of different meetings this past month. One important meeting I went and attended was the Secretary of Transportation. Barry Schock was at the Manufacturer Association. He was in town to talk about the important issues of transportation that affect our region. Again, very important for the city, the county, of course, the whole state. But the money to maintain the local roads and bridges cannot keep up with the need that's out there, especially bridge repair. In Pennsylvania, we have so many bridges and so many roads, and the state is proposing to create new revenue to pay for this need, so they're trying to be creative to find ways to pay for this, but definitely, it's a need, it's definitely a need in the city. I attended the Erie Neighborhood Watch meeting on March 27th out at the library. It was inspiring to hear all the neighborhood groups talk about their latest initiatives and also talk about their challenges. There's a lot of sharing going on with different needs that each neighborhood has individually. I also gave a couple of updates on city council activities, tried to get their input on what's going on. Hopefully, if there is a neighborhood association or watch in the area, you can try to join and participate. I attended, as liaison to Erie Zoo, I attended their meeting on March 25th. There is one bit of good news I just wanted to talk about, is they're renovating their lion exhibit, and they're going to expand that to also include the bear exhibit. So, again, that's good news. The construction's going to begin this summer and will be completed by the summer, next summer of 2014. I attended the Burton Deal Neighborhood Watch meeting on the 18th. I went to, of course, meet with them on a couple of concerns, but the main reason I met with them is the initiative to put a new dog park at McCollum Park sometime in the near future. Again, we're still in the early stages in discussion for that, but I've volunteered my time to assist in the planning of the park to help them out. A lot of residents noted some of the past problems and obstacles that occurred when they tried to do some development in that park in the past, and of course, we're looking at all those, and it's great to see them come out and let us know what those problems were. And we'll continue working that effort and try to see if this can all come together. I guess that's it for my report. I did note that the Seavol's home opener's tomorrow, and also, my daughters in the Collegiate Academy, they're doing a hairspray April 11th, 12th, and 13th, so definitely a bunch of talented kids. If anyone can go, it'd be a great show. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Evans?
Good morning. A few things I wanted to mention. At one of our recent meetings, one of the citizens to be heard brought forth a concern about vacant and dilapidated property at 419 West Second Street. I checked with the redevelopment authority, and that property is on the agenda for the next Blighted Property Review Committee meeting. Now, that's not a rapid process of declaring blight and then ultimately, if the owner of the property refuses to make adjustments and to improve the property, then ultimately taking the property by eminent domain, that doesn't happen quickly. But nevertheless, I think it's important for the person who brought forth the issue to know that it is now being looked at and the process is beginning. Speaking of that Blighted Property Review Committee issue, David mentioned that he had attended the Neighborhood Watch council meeting, as did I, and that was one of the issues that was discussed rather openly, is when properties are purchased at tax sales, in many cases, they're purchased by out-of-town owners who have no intention of living there but who really use the property for rental purposes, and in some cases, rental purposes are not really legitimate, they're merely a guise for drug distribution and other activities. And I was pleased to see the citizens there bring those concerns to the police who are in attendance and to alert them to specific properties they have concerns about, and hopefully, the police department can then begin surveillance and investigation process, and if, in fact, illegal activities are occurring, then that's the way to get them stopped. So, again, it's not an overnight process, but the citizens bringing those things to the attention of the police is an important first step. I attended the Housing Authority's open house over at the John Horan Garden Apartments for the new dental clinic being done in connection with Community Health Net. That's a huge victory, I think, for the community in terms of having a dental clinic for lower-income families. Dental care is one of the first things that's often let go when people don't have money, and yet, dental care is an integral part of one's health status. Heart problems and all other kinds of problems can be, in many cases, traced back to poor dental care or lack of dental care altogether. So, it was really, I think, a victory for the community to see that facility opened. They also have a medical clinic there being staffed with students from Gannon University, so it's really, I think, a fine step in the right direction. On a somewhat less-than-positive note, the Housing Authority was informed that they were going to lose about $600,000 in funding due to the federal sequestration, and that is unfortunately going to force them to freeze any further Section 8 housing vouchers. It's going to require that they trim some of the services, support services they provide, and in an effort to try and lighten the impact, John Horan and the other key officers of the Housing Authority have voluntarily, without being asked, agreed to freeze their compensation. And I think that's something that needs to be more publicly recognized. You know, people talk a lot about people in public office and city employees and others and their compensation, but there are a lot of times when people that work for government do things voluntarily without being required to do that really help the community and help us continue to provide services to the citizens. So, I just want to publicly acknowledge John and his staff for doing that. I also attended the last Port Authority meeting, and there are three things they talked about that I think are germane to our discussion today. The first is they have finally secured the money necessary to repair the wall on the west slip, which is critical to the Don John shipbuilding activities. A couple of the ships that are down in the port now are going to remain this summer for complete rebuild and retrofits, and without that wall being fixed, we would not be able to continue to attract that business and the employment that comes with it. So, this is an important project. The second one is that they are assisting several local businesses, Harding or Transportation and others, to get foreign trade zone status in an effort to help with General Electric, and finally, they're working to provide an at-grade intersection at the Liberty Pier so that we can have safe pedestrian crossing of the Bayfront Parkway. It may not be quite the pedestrian bridge that we would all like to see eventually there, as was mentioned by the gentleman from the Erie Reader, but nevertheless, it's a step in the right direction, and I think it'll be a welcome addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick three items. I received a call from a citizen complaining about suspicious activities at 21st and Ash area. I will be meeting with the chief of police this week and put that on his desk, but knowing Chief Franklin, he may be aware of it, and they may be working on a resolution at this time, but I will be meeting with him. Secondly, I checked with the police department this morning. We have three active African-American police officers as of today. I am encouraging the African-American community to apply for the jobs when they become available, take the tests. If there are any individuals that have served in the armed forces, there are additional points they will receive, male or female, in the results of that test. And so, with our 17, 18 percent African-American population, I'm encouraging the young folks to consider becoming a police officer. Finally, there's a project on Buffalo Road across from JFK on the south side was torn down. There was a house that was torn down, but it's just sitting there, and I've spoken to Mr. Joe Salati on it, and he's making all his efforts to get McCormick to clean that up. But what I also found out is that McCormick receives quite a bit of business from the city, and they will tear down the house, and then they will go somewhere else and tear down the house. They may have seven, eight projects going at the same time, and they don't get back to the first one. My suggestion to administration, and I will be watching it, that in the future, that Mr. McCormick do not receive any bids until he showed that he can complete a project. We talk about blighted community. Tearing the house down is one thing, but leveling it is another thing. So, I will be taking that project on, Mr. President, and let's hope that we can... hope that we can tear the house down, level it, and then go to another area. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rancunzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the Erie Reader folks for coming in and giving us their input regarding the development of the GAF site. Council is concerned about that property as well, realizing that it's the last big parcel of undeveloped land on the Bayfront, and it's a beautiful opportunity for the City of Erie. Under Councilman Brennan's leadership, we held a public hearing several months back to discuss our concerns over the initial development plan that was publicized. And we all had some reservations about that plan and brought some folks together who had alternative ideas and also the citizens to hear from them. I think we pretty much made it clear that we were looking for a mixed use of that land in a public amenities, things for the public to enjoy and use on that site, and not really just parking lots and things like that, that were a lot of what was in the plan before. So I think, we don't really have any active role in the decision-making as a city council. Our role comes when the developer needs to come for waterfront conditional use. They have to come before us, have a hearing, show us their plan, and we have to make sure that it meets within our waterfront conditional use requirements. That, however, does not give us the opportunity to just say no because we don't like something. So we need to keep that in mind and instead use our positions to talk about what's coming and look at what's coming and try to bring insight into the folks that are working on the project to kind of give, you know, the citizens perspective before it's too late. So I think that's important for the citizens to know. The other thing, just to let everybody know, these little things we have up here are Microsoft surfaces that we are using now, so that, if you notice, we don't have a whole bunch of papers. We used to have all these papers full of memos and agendas, and then we'd be flipping through, trying to figure out what we're doing. So what we're doing here is we're having all our documents emailed or scanned to a SharePoint site so that council can log on and look at everything pertaining to the meeting all at one time. So we're not playing Solitaire, or texting, or Facebook, or whatever. As a matter of fact, we don't know how to connect to those things. We're not that tech savvy. So that's what we're doing here, and we're going to have training some of the folks from the Erie Area COG, which has an e-government committee, which is doing an initiative to do, increase IT throughout the governments in Erie County. So they have a huge initiative trying to advance that, and we are trying to do our part and start into the electronic age. I know we're a little late, but anyway, better late than never. And so they're going to train us some more so that we don't keep tapping at it and poking at it and trying to get it to work. So that's what we have going on here, and we look forward to getting more training after our meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mersky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. A report on the Convention Center Authority. There was a bid put out for new seating for the arena. So I know when you go in right now, it doesn't look like a lot's been done. But new seating is coming this summer, also are into next year. The bids are going out. And also, the basketball court is going to be refurbished this summer. In terms of the Seawolves, they do start tomorrow. All the groundwork's been laid. The grounds crews have been out there working diligently with all the snow and rain, and everything's been done and ready to go. All the preseason stuff's already done, and they're ready for the home opener tomorrow. Also, I just wanted to let people know the Erie Explosion Football Team opened its home season on March 3rd, so there's a lot to do. The Otters closed out their season on March 15th. Ice has already been removed from the floor for the season, and there's a lot going on over there. Casey Wells and his crew do a fabulous job maintaining the Warner Theater, the Convention Center, the Erie Insurance Arena, and the ballpark. They have a lot going on over there, and we thank them for their hard work. Also, I'd just like to thank my colleagues. I was out of town. I am the liaison to the Neighborhood Watch, and I'm thankful that people come in and pitch-hit when, and we all work together, and I think that's a great thing. So that's all I have for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did attend and then afterwards meet with Dennis Zelinski from EMTA last week, or earlier this week, last week, sorry. They are continuing to obviously work on their major building project that is there in the process of 30-plus-million-dollar project. It was interesting to me that the level of detail they're taking with the, in my, what my first opinion was, smaller issues. You have 30-plus-million-dollar project, and they're literally still meeting with citizens and individuals from the community on one particular dynamic that they have questions on. And so I just wanted to let them know that that is greatly appreciated from our perspective, because a lot of times we get questions about things we don't know the answer to. And when we send them or direct them to an authority or to a director of an authority, it's great that they will not just entertain them, but will actually answer questions and be receptive to those concerns and resolve any and all of those issues that they can resolve for the citizens, and still keep the integrity of the project and the initial vision of the project intact. Also, excuse me, I'm lighting a little bit of a throat thing here. But they also, the EMTA is managing and under management of the Intermodal Center. And so they are working with Altair Property Management to help continue the leases of tenants that are currently in that facility, but also looking for other tenants and other organizations, groups, businesses, et cetera, to be tenants, to maximize the capacity available for space to be used in the Intermodal Center. And so the EMTA is doing great work and are doing everything that they can, expanding where they can. And it's not perfect, but they are definitely diligent at working and fulfilling this long-term vision that they have to be the best transportation authority. Definitely in the area, obviously, but best that they can be. Also, in relation to some comments that were made earlier in relation to repository sales and individuals who are landlords from outside of town. Something we did a couple years ago is we had an issue in place where if you were an ex-landlord who lived in somewhere other than the city, that you had to have a local representative or a property management person so that we would have access to someone local. So you can be in San Diego, and that's cool as a landlord, but you need to have someone designated locally to make sure that if there are inappropriate uses of the property, or if there are concerns with management, any type of property management issues, there's someone local that we have access to here in the city. And so it's, I won't say an easy fix, but it's easier to make sure that we're doing our part to enforce that component of the repository sale process and the out-of-town landlord interaction. If we do that, that will give us someone, if there are some concerns, that we can go directly to here. So I want to make sure that we're looking at that as well. We don't have a problem with out-of-town landlords or people who want to invest, especially if they're legitimately wanting to invest, and that's appropriate. But again, we need to have access to someone. So hopefully, if we're doing that well, and we can maybe manage that, and John, we can check into that and see if we are really tracking and making sure that is a component of this process that we're enforcing. I think that will help rectify some of those concerns that citizens have, whether it be Neighborhood Watch or just your average citizen in the neighborhood. And that's my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just a few comments on my end to follow up with Mr. Jones on the landlords. Tomorrow, we're having a study session, one for the Mercer's College situation and the neighbors' concerns up there with the rental properties and the landlords. And to see, we did have one earlier this year, but I'll be honest with you, I think they sort of got short-changed a little bit. We, time constraints, we had to cut it a little short, so we're trying to make up for it tomorrow, as well as we're following up on that tethering for animals in the City of Erie. Once again, the group approached us a month and a half back, and with the help of Mr. Witherspoon spearheading it, we're going to meet with them tomorrow, and Ms. Schoff getting any information she could regarding it. We're going to come to a discussion tomorrow evening at 6:30. All the public is welcome. City of Erie starts their spring cleanup this coming Sunday. Please, everybody take advantage of it. Clean up the attic, the shed, the basement. Please, follow the rules. One large item a week with numerous small items. No electronics, no appliances. Not saying if you don't put some of that next to the curb that your neighbor may not want to. If you put a free sign on it, take it off your hands. But please, be considerate to your neighbors during this month-long city cleanup, and everybody wins on that then. One other thing, we had our first junior council member at our last meeting, and got some good reviews on it. And I see we got a new one today. Our senior council member, but... Super experienced. All kidding aside, if anybody knows any young male, female out there, the seat's always open. We'd like to get them involved, get her involved, whether it be a morning meeting, an evening meeting. But people like to see our youth do something good and be part of our city. So with that, thank you. Mr. Kwiatkowski?
We are above 40, we just wanted to tell you. While Rose is handing out this report, I'll give my report real quick. Then this will be the official one. I'd like to tell you that the pension funds recently made a full recovery back to their original fund, which was well above 201 million, and the water reserve is getting close to cracking a $9 million mark. These are great notes, and it's been a lot of hard work. In the last 12 years, it's been one that tested this country and the city. And on a personal note, before I go into my report, I'd like to piggyback onto what Mr. Jones said about a classmate of mine. I was coming back from Allentown and was with great remorse that I heard my good friend Bill Hamilton had died. Billy and I go back a long ways. We were classmates at Tech. And I almost didn't recognize him, because if you knew Billy, most people only saw his backside when he was running. He was a tremendous athlete. He would have held the city 100-yard record at that time if he hadn't got hurt. But long past his athletic accomplishments, and he was a great athlete. He was a good classmate, a good teammate. He pushed me hard to get my letter, and I was proud to wear the same Tech letter that he did. But Billy was far beyond that. He was a great human being, a person that, you know, made the most out of life. When I was on the school board and he was a young teacher, he and I teamed up to clash horns with the then-governor and superintendent to make sure that his kids were allowed to see the governor. That's a personal story, which I'll be glad to relate to anybody. But Billy was a fighter, a great person, and I truly miss him as a classmate. And now the official report. Once a year, I have to certify the council that my department, under Council Ordinance 13,913, excuse me, file number, Ordinance Number 66-1989, which basically gives my department the authority to file the reports of Act 205. And I want to tell you that for the last 12 years, and previous to that, the previous controller, we have never missed a report. They were submitted on time as of March 27, 2013. And the three reports were the AG-PF64, the AG-PF490, and the AG-PF385. These are the reports that eventually lead to the reimbursement check that the city receives. It's critical that they're done, and I want to thank the three ladies in my office, Marilyn, Teresa, and Lucy. The office has been kind of in shambles the last month. Putting that report together is one of the most important jobs of my office, and I hope that whoever follows me will do the same. And I want to thank my staff, I want to thank council and administration, and all the employees here for all their help in making sure that report got out and that the city will receive the funds from the Attorney General, I mean, the Auditor General's Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kwiatowski.
No reports.
Ms. Schoff? That should do her. Rose, any report on your end?
No reports from me today. Okay.
Great job.
City Council now adjourns at 9:50. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, and Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.